Library Board of Trustees. And I'd like to do a roll call. Who would like to do the roll call? I'll do it. Mr. Freiberger.
Freystraw. I'm here.
Mr. Pastrick.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
And Paul Moss, I am here as well. So I would accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Approval of minutes, excuse me, of June 26 and July 10 would accept a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Excuse me, approval carries. Financial report.
Hello, how are you guys doing this evening, this evening, this afternoon? Guess we want to rush along. Hot?
Very hot.
As of today, all lines are currently spending within their normal spending pattern, other than the previous lines we talked about, which were computer equipment, which was the April report, training and then landscaping, snow removal, which were on the February report. Other than that, everything is spending where they need to be. Last month's meeting, I reported that all the work on the annual audit for the library has been completed. And an annual comprehensive financial report has been submitted to GFOA for consideration of the excellence in financial reporting. And you all have a copy in front of you as well, and it has been added online at the ACPL website trustee page. So anybody is welcome to view that if they would like. So far, we're continuing the budget preparations for 2026. It's going along pretty well. The estimates for miscellaneous revenue were recently published. And last week, the initial circuit breaker loss caps were listed in Gateway. The amount increased significantly from last year by over $2 million. They're estimating our new amount to be around $3,249,400 compared to 1.2 million last year. So that was a little sticker shock, I will say that. I know they are estimates. I'm hoping they are estimating really high. So we will see usually April. We will get the actual, but we're just going to budget accordingly and see how that comes out. The main item we are still waiting on is the local income tax for 2026. And then July 15, Susan and I had a meeting with a couple of members of the City Controller's Office, basically to introduce ourselves and discuss the timeline for the budget process. I thought it was a great meeting. We walked through what the next few months are going to look like. They're willing to assist us in any way possible and reach out with any questions. But overall, I thought it was a really nice meeting. As of right now, we are on city council's schedule, along with the PTC, for September 9 for introduction. September 16 or September 23 for public hearing and discussion. They're going to finalize that within the next couple of weeks, and they will let us know that. And then passage for October 14. They indicated we only needed to be there for the public hearing and discussion part, although I will probably be there for October 14 as well. Then they will, hopefully, everything will go smoothly, no problems whatsoever. It's what I'm anticipating. And that's really all I have right now. Pretty simple month, but I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions? I'm hearing any. Appreciate your report. And now we'll move to the approval of claims.
Do we need a motion to approve the financial report?
We do. Sorry about that. Is there a motion to approve the financial report?
I'll move. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll move to the approval of claims.
Okay. Total of claims today was $585,000. High dollars was for various quarterly insurance policy payments of $144,000. And then basically the next one was about over $90,000 for the last payment of the roofing project. Other than that, we'll have the retainage amount on that project. But that should be completed on that one as well.
All right. Any questions about claims? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
And I am going to pass around the claims from the 10th of the month, because I do need one more signature on that one as well.
Okay, so while the claims get passed around, we'll move to the committee reports. Marty's not here, so I'm not sure.
I can give a brief update, because we have a pretty big one. Last night, I signed the contract for architectural services. And I want to thank Kim for all of her work in working with the architects to get that document prepared. And also Pete and Ted in their office for their very extensive review of the contract. As you know, we have a team of four architects who are providing services for Phase One. We signed the contract with Luminauts out of Indianapolis. But they are working in collaboration with the other three firms. But very happy to have that checked off the list.
All right. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move along to International Association of, excuse me, Jewish Genealogical Societies Conference Preview. That should be interesting.
It will be very interesting. And as they approach the podium, I will introduce people who don't need introduction, but I will anyway. Kurt Witcher, our Director of Special Collections, and Elizabeth Hodges, who is our Assistant Genealogy Services Manager. We have been prepping for years, no exaggeration, for a major international conference that is coming to Fort Wayne next month. And Kurt and Elizabeth are going to tell you all about it. And I think they're even going to give you a preview of a big conference coming in 2026. Am I right?
I think possibly. Absolutely. Yes. Well, good afternoon on this cool July afternoon. So in 16 days, 10 hours and 53 minutes, the International Association of Jewish Genealogical Societies will begin here at the Allen County Public Library and the Grand Wayne Center. And we're just really excited to have this first ever international conference for family history devoted to Eastern European and Jewish ancestry here in Fort Wayne. For 44 years, they have held their conference in a Tier One city. Tier One, more than a million individuals. So this is their first endeavor to be in a Tier Three city. And I know some people look at Tier Three and they think, oh, gosh, that must be so much less than. And we know from the great community that we live in that this is an amazing community. So as many of our team have said, it's a testament to the Allen County Public Library, this great organization and this great community that we attracted this conference. How did we get it? We got it because the Northeast Indiana Jewish Genealogical Society partnered with us to bring in international speakers to present programs here. And every one of them that came here pre-COVID were eyes popped and mouth open like, really? This is here in Fort Wayne, Indiana, this great library, this amazing research collection, which really holds its own against any research collection in the Milky Way galaxy, as many of you have heard me say. So what a testament to this community and certainly to the library that we get this, this conference that's never been in a Tier Three city. All of the Jewish Genealogical Society conferences at an international level are held on the east side of the Appalachians or the west side of the Rockies, with the exception of Chicago. So it's wonderful that it's here in Fort Wayne. That's how it arrived. I was part of the advanced team that went to the Philadelphia conference last year just to see how they did what they did. And after day one of that conference, it was like, we got this. We got this. Fort Wayne, Will Trump, anything Philadelphia had to offer without breaking a sweat. And we've been breaking a sweat, as Susan has indicated. So what's neat about this conference is about 600 people will be here. It's the longest conference in the genealogy space. It's five and a half days. We actually had our first conference attendee come to Fort Wayne to do some advanced research 10 days ago. So the conference is attracting people to come and spend time and dollars in our community and use our research collection. As we all know, teamwork makes the dream work, right? And so we've had a great team, the library's team, all teams throughout the library, from marketing and events to the genealogy center. Visit Fort Wayne, Grand Wayne Center are just stellar organizations. And the Jewish genealogical community is amazing, as well as the Jewish Federation and the temple. All have contributed many, many, many hours, as Susan said, years, years of work. So it's just really exciting to have this conference. Just a whisper away. For us on the implementation team, it seems like just a few hours away rather than 16 days, 10 hours and some odd minutes. But I'd like Elizabeth just to walk us through some of the specifics of the conference, respecting your time. But I think you'll be interested to know some of her details, and then I'll wrap it up at the end.
Okay, thank you. I hope we're all doing okay with temperature today. So as Susan said, my name is Elizabeth Hodges. I am the Genealogy Services Assistant Manager. And I am also the co-coordinator of volunteers for this conference. So this conference, we have about 200 people who have already come forward willing to volunteer their time to help make this a phenomenal conference. About half are people who are attending the conference because they want it to be successful too, and they want to help us. And the other half are from the community, both people who just love the library and love helping us be successful. And then also from the Jewish community here. Now, the conference is going to be split between two different locations. The Grand Wayne Center, which right down the street, pretty much the whole building is being used. We, as volunteers, were going to be assisting with registration in the expo hall. We're also coordinating volunteers to assist with monitoring things like workshops and luncheons, things like that. There will also be translators. People have volunteered their time to help translate things like Russian, Hebrew, Yiddish. And that's one of the things that makes this conference really unique because of how much people really need those translations for the research that they're doing. So it's pretty cool. Another really great thing that will be at the Grand Wayne Center is a hospitality desk. So hospitality, what that means is that we will have people who are local helping conference attendees feel welcome, helping them find their way, helping them find places to eat, places to maybe get some groceries if they need it. But at the end of the day, our goal is to provide seamless, on-the-ground support for the conference, for the attendees, and to make everyone kind of leave the conference with a positive feelings towards Fort Wayne and the library especially. So we will be having extended hours that will be taking place from the Friday before until the Thursday after. Well, Thursday is the last day of the conference. We'll have volunteers in this building as well, assisting ACPL's lovely security team as security docents, just making sure that the people coming in, that they are conference attendees and they don't wander through the building and get lost. We want them to get to where they want to be, which is the genealogy center. There will be nine very full tours happening of the genealogy department on Sunday. Kurt can talk a little bit about that if he wants to, but it will be very busy of people wanting to get the lay of the land. So when they have time during the conference, they can come in and do research. Also, in the theater, there will be a Jewish Film Festival. I believe there will be about nineteen film screenings. So our event staff is working very hard. They're phenomenal. It's going to be a really great film festival. And this happens in conjunction with the conference. It's happened for many years, but this will probably be the best one because it's the first one, I believe, I could be wrong, that is happening in an actual theater, not just on a projector in a room. So it will be pretty, pretty cool. Now, there will also be workshops happening in the computer labs just outside these meeting rooms that we're in right now. But at the end of the day, we want everyone to have a good time. We want to show off our amazing library. So that's just some of the things that we have coming up for the conference. Okay. You have anything to add?
So just wrapping up, the most popular tours, and there are some great ones around the city, there's a fine art tour, a walking tour, there's a museum of fine art tour. But the most popular tour out of all of them, there are, I think, fifteen separate tours of the genealogy center and nine of them are completely full right now. So that's the most popular tour. So I know we're all surprised by that. So I just wanted to close with just a few more comments. Unlike most conferences, it starts on a Sunday and wraps through the major part of the week. Most genealogy conferences start on Wednesday or Thursday and end up on Saturday. And Jewish conferences have a really wonderful flavor in that they have a large infusion of what I call the family reunion sentiment. So they love conversing with each other and talking and sharing. And they'll stop, like in the middle of traffic or right in front of the registration desk, and they'll have the greatest conversations about all kinds of wonderful things. So as Elizabeth said, we're looking to capitalize on that vibe. They also claim Lincoln, yes, Abraham Lincoln, as almost one of theirs. And in fact, there are some scholars who are sort of what I'm going to call apologists for, you know, maybe if we researched hard enough, we could find out that Lincoln really was Jewish. So another popular tour is going to be a VIP tour of the Roland Center where Dr. Gary Zola, who runs the Hebrew Union College in Cincinnati, just recently resigned from that, is on the Holocaust Museum Board. He's going to be giving with our Lincoln librarians a special VIP tour of the Roland Center, so yet another area of the library. We limited that tour to fifteen people because that's really, you get the best experience with fifteen people. It was like sold out. I mean, not sold out, but filled up in like ten minutes, fifteen minutes. So we think there's a lot of high excitement around this. The conference will actually kick off Sunday evening, Sunday afternoon, some exhibit hall. And I want to close up just saying, what a neat set of circumstances. The opening session will be Sunday evening, and C.C. Moore, who's on Henry Louis Gates PBS, who's really a very famous forensic genealogist, and she came here and spoke at this library before she was really like famous in this very room to several hundred people. But for those of you who remember, she's the one that solved the April Tinsley murder case. It took ten years and the evolution of forensic genealogy. And C.C. Moore was the one that solved that case. So it's kind of neat. It's come full circle. She's come back to the community that she really helped give some peace to a missing person in a horrible event that happened in a young girl's life. So it took a decade, but C.C. Moore was the one that was able to solve that. I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you have, but we're just really excited about welcoming this international conference to Fort Wayne, Indiana.
It is a big deal, that's for sure, question.
Yeah, how many did you say?
Around six hundred people.
So this is all preregistered attendees, no public interaction?
There will be a possibility, if people are interested, to register on-site, but yeah, it is a registered event. Yep.
Quick question. It's, have you thought about parking?
We think a lot about parking.
Specifically the underground parking. And I'm assuming that the parking right now is influenced by maybe some people that know that it's free parking and they can go to their businesses and such. But it's not as empty down there as it usually is.
Correct. And we've thought about that and mused about that. So a high percentage, certainly not ninety percent, but I'm going to say around eighty percent of the people coming to the conference are from far enough away that they're going to drive or fly.
Right.
So they're going to stay at a hotel. Even if you're driving, it doesn't make any sense to pull your car out of the Marriott parking lot to drive a block to park in a library parking lot. So I don't think it will be as congested as one might initially think, but there will be some challenges. But I think they'll be easily managed.
So I just want to applaud your efforts that have extended over five years or more. I mean, the seeds that you've sown that have led to this. Man, that's a kudos to you guys, building those relationships and that kind of effort.
I appreciate that.
So sad that Mr. Eisbach can't be here to hear this report today because he'd be excited.
He'll be here for the conference, I am sure. I think he will participate in several of the events.
I did have a question for you. In light of the sensitivity the last couple of years politically with the Jewish community, I don't need no specifics, but far as security is concerned, have you had to consider some other unique things perhaps?
Yes, and, so I can't provide you with a lot of details.
I'm not looking for details.
Because I don't know a lot of details, and that's the way a security plan should be. I can tell you with a great amount of certainty that Bernie with Homeland Security, Fort Wayne Police Department, the Allen County Sheriff's Department, and the private security that the conference employs and the Grand Wayne Center's security have all been in conversation. And the one who's kind of leading that, who deals with these local security groups all the time, is Samara Shere, who is the Executive Director of the Jewish Temple on Old Mill Road. And she and Homeland are like that because they have those same kind of concerns about their worship services and their property. I can tell you, no details, but there have been lots of meetings and I feel confident, but also knowing that at any time, on any day, something crazy can happen. And they've worked through some table, some table exercises on what things might happen. Those who frequent the Grand Wayne Center, as far as going through it for, you know, to go to Starbucks or head through the Grand Wayne Center to get to the embassy, you might notice some different traffic patterns during the days of the conference, but yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good answer. Well, congratulations, obviously. It's pretty exciting, for sure. Do you get anything, like through the Visitors Bureau, that gives you kind of the impact, the dollar impact, or how many hotel rooms are booked or anything like that?
Short answer, Paul, a great question is yes. And the great people at Visit Fort Wayne, just like they track the economic impact for the International German Genealogy Partnership that happened a couple of years ago. Bethany from Visit Fort Wayne has been working hand in glove with us this whole time. And absolutely, we will get a number from them. We'll also get a list of what room pickup is. And I can share with you that our room block at the Hilton, completely full, room block at the Courtyard, seventy-eight point seven percent full as of yesterday afternoon.
Wow, that's awesome.
Our weekly meeting, yeah. So yeah, it's really good pickup. This conference tends, again, it's a longer conference. People tend to come earlier. I'd like to track the economic impact of that person who came in ten days ago and who's staying through the conference. Got to be a few bucks.
Absolutely.
Happy to answer any other questions?
Any other questions?
Kurt, are you able to talk about the conference that's coming next year?
I am, that's what I was just going to say, Susan. So in closing, because, you know, when you have so much fun with one event, you want to plan another event. So less than a year from now, the National Genealogical Society is holding their national conference the last weekend in May next year. And they already had a site visit. Allison and Elizabeth and I participated in that site visit with the folks at the Grand Wayne Center. Want to close with this remark, because I'm just, I'm Fort Wayne proud and I'm certainly library proud. So the meeting planner for the National Genealogical Society, when they were here for their site visit, said, you know, and the executive director, first hour of the day-long site visit, if I could hold every conference in Fort Wayne, I would. What a great city, what a great library, how economical compared to other cities. So what a great testament to that. The meeting planner for the Jewish conference, who plans meetings in Israel and London and LA and Chicago, in a recent Zoom meeting, and we're meeting weekly with our checklists, someone asked her about, well, how challenging is this conference? Because it's in a tier-three city. And someone was trying to say, eh, I'm a tier-three city. And she said, and I can get the Zoom recording if anybody wants to listen to it. If I could hold every meeting in Fort Wayne, Indiana, I would. And this is an international meeting planner. And I thought, kudos to the library, to the city, to the community. People are blown away by everything, the hotels, the convention center. I mean, it's a great community.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other questions? I'm sorry, did you have something else you wanted to say, Kurt? Good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Down to the executive director's report.
Thank you, Paul.
Why don't you get top that?
I won't, but, but here are a few things, news you can use. So if you look at your agenda for this month, you see a very aesthetic chart of all of your names and your appointing authorities and your terms of service. Thank you for Elena, to Elena for creating that. That is not just an aesthetic element. This is actually a new law that took effect July first, that for boards such as yourself that are appointed by elected officials, we have to list on the agenda all of your names, your appointing authority, and your terms of service. So thank you, Ted, for letting us know about this law. And let the record show that we are in compliance, aren't we?
It certainly is a wonderful charge, my thinking, yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. I submitted a written report, just a few highlights. We opened our latest story scape at the Grable Branch on July fifteenth instead of a ribbon cutting. We reflected the spirit of the community and we had a ceremonial train whistle to open the space. And thank you, Jim Williams, for joining us for the morning. It was a great morning. We received a ten thousand dollar grant for the Imagination Library, thanks to the Dr. Lewis and Ann B. Schneider Foundation. We were recently part of a conference called Ignited, a conference for K through twelve educators offered by Fort Wayne Community Schools each summer. And we had representation from our team, including our Roland Center Educational Outreach Coordinator, Sarah. Speaking of the Roland Center and Abraham Lincoln, we are full steam ahead on our promotion for our Fall One County One Book Community-Wide Reading Initiative. Thanks to funding from the Friends of the Lincoln Collection, paperback copies of the feature book, Differ We Must: How Lincoln Succeeded in a Divided America, have been distributed to area book clubs. We have a book discussion guide on our website, and I included a paper copy of it in your packet. This is available on the One County One Book website within our own library website, so book clubs can use it to hold their own programs. Also, as of this month, there are unlimited copies of the book as an ebook on the Libby app. So we'll be featuring that through the program in October. So anyone who wants an e-copy of the book to read, there is no waitlist. Come and get it. The Friends of the Library held their annual membership meeting on July tenth, and they elected a slate of officers. And Mike Horton will continue as Friends' president. There is trivia tonight at the Chapman's Brewing Company at Electric Works. It is being hosted by our genealogy center staff. It is called Brain Buzz: A Genealogy Trivia Night. And I think this is the first time they're doing that, right? I see nods over there. So we've had trivia before about books and other things. This is the first genealogy-centric trivia night. So I'm excited to see how that goes. There's a lot going on tonight at the library. And Beth, do you mind sharing a bit about the program that's going on literally in the next room over at five o'clock that you're a part of?
I'd be happy to. I have been working with, well, many of us have often worked with, the Neighborhood Activation Team as part of the city of Fort Wayne. And in their efforts, several of, they just have an amazing, amazing group of people there. They have been putting on a series of workshops for neighborhood leaders over the last several years. They've run a few cohorts of neighborhood leaders to learn, help them learn about how city government works, how their neighborhood associations can and should work, learning about legal requirements, learning about projects they might be able to do, and learning about what resources are available to neighborhood leaders to improve their communities. This evening, I'll be one of the several partners that are presenting at a fundraising session, teaching the resources available to neighborhood leaders who want to fundraise. Specifically, my part is a workshop about the resources the library offers. We have some incredible resources to go in-depth on who is paying for stuff around Fort Wayne and how to find that out so that you can, you know, apply for those grants, find those funders, and host your block party or put up the signs for your community, your identity or your new logo for your neighborhood. So that will be this evening. I'm really looking forward to it. We do this, we're doing this now three or four times a year.
Thank you, Beth. Mr. Williams mentioned parking, and I wanted to share that last month, you approved that we entered into a contract with a new parking provider, ABM. Wanted to share that that contract is now with Ted and team for review. We have been working with ABM on the implementation. We expect signs to go up to let people know about the change at the beginning of August with enforcement coming around mid to late August. We want to make sure we have plenty of time to get the message out and to get it out again and again in all the different ways so no one is taken by surprise. Ash and her team are planning on making some instructional videos to show people step-by-step what the process is going to be. ABM's been very great to work with. Also wanted to point your attention to, I think, one of the bigger quarterly managers' reports that you've received in your packet. It's a thick one because a lot has happened this quarter. This also includes a lot of summer learning activities that happened in June, so you see great photos throughout of things like eagles and branches, and there's even photos of a baby prom, which is exactly what it sounds like, a prom held for babies. There was even a prop limo that they could pose in, so a great time was had by all, I am sure. But one thing in particular I wanted to point out, and I asked Beth to give a little more information about it. If you look on page thirty-seven on the Library at Home section, it mentions that we have added a second dedicated vehicle to the Library at Home fleet. We were able to do that through some generous grant funding. And Beth, do you mind sharing a bit more about that?
The number of employees working in our Library at Home team, because the demand has been so great, and with additional employees, we needed additional vehicles so we wouldn't stress the fleet for the rest of our library services. So this vehicle has been a long time coming. It is a new Ram Promaster 3500 with specialized shelving to carry books and book carts from the library to primarily retirement communities and other places where there are large groups of people who cannot make it to the library on a regular basis. This project is very nearly complete. We're waiting on just a few flourishes, like that final wrap on the outside. It's designed and gorgeous, but just needs to be installed. And I'm really pleased to share that thanks to a sixty thousand dollar grant from the AWS Foundation, and then also some very hard work by our Library at Home team and especially supervisor John Frinkie, we were able to bring this project in for, instead of the projected almost two hundred thousand dollar budget, right around a hundred thousand dollars. So we've, and with the grant, then that's forty-four thousand dollars. So I'm very, very pleased to share that we've, we're bringing stellar new service. Our capacity is growing. We're reaching the needs of more of our community and for less than a quarter of what we originally thought.
And my final item is that tomorrow is the final And my final item is that tomorrow is the final day of the summer for our backpack distribution with Blessings in a Backpack. So, as we've talked about in previous meetings, Blessings in a Backpack have been a partner with us for, this is now the second summer, and on Fridays during the summer at our summer lunch sites, children can come and get a backpack full of food supplies for the weekend. Tomorrow is our final one of the season. This one is extra special in that in addition to the food, they will be getting an actual backpack they can use for back-to-school. So, that's happening at eight of our locations, and those distributions start at 11 o'clock, and they were very busy last year, and we anticipate they'll be equally as popular, if not more so, this year. And that's my report.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions for?
Yeah.
Susan, I have a quick one. With the grant for the Imagination Library, how does that put us with our funding for that now?
We still need some. So, the cost for the program each month is about $7, $7,500, and that is with the state matching funds. So, we have been told that we can still anticipate the state matching funds for the next six to eight months, but after that, then that cost will double. So, we do have a nice nest egg dedicated to the Imagination Library, held by the foundation, but we are continuously fundraising. And we do have all the faith and optimism in the world that First Lady Braun will be successful with her fundraising because she has taken the Imagination Library as her signature issue, and she is fundraising to make, make up that gap that the cut in the state budget has left us with.
Perfect. Any other questions for Susan? None. We'll move to new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Is there any public comment? Thank you. We did have a few folks at the last meeting that spoke. Can I just assume that there's been some follow-up with them?
There has, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, accept a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Apologize to Mr. Freystrafer.
Well, my grandmother was a fryburger.
Yep.
So, it's not so bad.
I'm watching a series with a fryburger, so that's part of my, on Netflix. We are adjourned. Sorry about that. Digression. Thank you very much. We don't have an executive.
We have a brief one, just to give.
Are we live?